I'm going to call this meeting for our -- oh, you have one. Um, the chair's report, well, we have a vacancy on school committee and today --
Karen Chelsk is here. Karen Chelsk is here.
The PTO president. We have the vacancy open until today and hopefully, well, we have -- we'll review them next week with the support of selectmen and appoints. So, and that's my -- we have, um, we are reviewing warrants on the table right now. They're going around right now. And so we're going to -- this is a meeting to establish all of these things. Our search consultant, what? Do you need to come up here, please? Come on up. You too, Karen. Why are you sitting there?
Yeah, come on up.
Well, you can go up there. I'm right up.
There's a comfy chairs over here.
We have a comfy chair right here and right there. Okay, well, I don't want to be disruptive. No, you're not. You are not.
So, everyone, this is Glenn Kucha from the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, and he is the executive director. He has single-handedly managed over 50 superintendent searches at his time with the organization. One important thing to bring to your attention is that he has sat where you guys are sitting right now. He was a school committee member in Cambridge for 12 years. 12 years, so he knows, uh, he knows what you're going through. He knows your feelings, so, uh, Glenn, welcome to Lunenburg.
Welcome to Burg. Okay, so today, we're going to establish guidelines of the search for the new superintendent schools. We're going to plan our timetable, the scope of the search, and we're going to try to develop a job description, what community and staff involvement in the screening process. So, you guys can just jump right in. I have to sign this giant pile? Wait, that's not a star. Yeah. So, guidelines for the search. What kind of guidelines? What are you talking about when you say guidelines?
Well, let me, uh, I want to make sure I have all my nice stuff with me. No, no, I know what it is. I do have something that I would like to share with you, and that is the document called the vacancy in the superintendency. It's sort of a decision tree, and it's more of a reference tool. And I have an electronic copy that I can forward to the secretary to attach to the minutes.
Oh, excellent.
This document should be part of the minutes of the meeting, and this is an extra copy. This is what you and I hear some of the things that the search committee, that the school committee will need to decide. And I'm just going to put a cough drop in here so that I don't --
Sorry if I make a mistake.
-- start coughing on you. Uh, there are certain things that you need to figure out. In no particular order, what are you looking for in a superintendent? So, when you develop some material that's going to get sent out to the universe of potential candidates, I have some samples here of what some districts do when they're looking for a superintendent. Many districts will print a promotional brochure. We do it for you with the content that you provide to us. Some districts are electing to do, to create the brochure, the promotional material, and distribute it electronically and not go to the expense of printing. And then what we can do is we can forward this material to our recruiting database, which is about 1,400 different places, to the websites in the superintendent's association, to our association, to the other school boards' associations. And in fact, next week, when the National Alliance of Superintendent Searchers meets, we are actually at that meeting, and we all exchange information about what's going on in our state. So, everybody will get whatever information there is, and people will know that Lunenburg is looking for a superintendent. So, I'm going to pass these samples around. Please take what you like.
When we create this document, does that, we have to do that in open meeting?
At an open meeting, no.
Okay.
What you would do is you would look at some of the information that's included in a document and figure out what you want to say about the town of Lunenburg, what you want to say about what you're looking for in a superintendent, and put a little bit of information about your timeline, the number of students and faculty members that you have. We like to put the names of the school committee members inside so that people will know who they're dealing with, and any other relevant information about the town, plus the application process.
Okay.
You will need to decide what your timeline is so that the applicants will know when their applications need to be in. You will want to make some initial decisions about compensation. Now, sometimes districts will set a compensation range. Sometimes the districts will say competitive salary and fringe benefits package negotiable.
Let's just have the circle and fill this over here.
Sometimes it'll be more specific or less specific, but you might look up to my gear of what is that you'd like to have for compensation. We put this stuff in a document, then we put it out there.
Okay.
In the meantime, most of your candidates will want some confidentiality at some part of the search process. Your candidates, you know, can, people just won't comply if their application and their names are going to be in public despite the application process. The attorney general under the open meeting law does allow you to appoint a search committee of whomever you believe would be best to advise you, and I can share some thoughts with you about what a search committee might look like. But the advantage a search committee has is the search committee has the right to convene an executive session to screen, select applicants for interviews, and to conduct the initial interview in executive session. And then the search committee can make recommendations to the school committee for who the finalists should be, and then the school committee will take over, and everything the school committee does is in public around the superintendent search. So theoretically, let's say you have 20 applications, and the search committee decides to interview eight or 10 of them, and then wants to recommend three or four of them to the school committee for final stage. That's the process that you use. So if you have a search committee, you need to determine how many members and what categories of people would fill those positions. So, for example, you might include a couple of representatives of the faculty, parents from the different groups that you have, from the different --
Schools.
-- schools. You might include, uh, we often have a town administrator, sometimes the police chief or the school resource officer is on the search committee. Sometimes citizens at large, usually a representative of the central office. And we strongly recommend that you have a couple of members of the school committee on the search committee, because that way the school committee's perspective will always be known. In other words, the search committee doesn't get out of hand because you know what the school committee wants. And search committees can run off in different directions. There are things that happen in search committees that benefit from the supervision of members of the school committee, but because you're a five-member board, you can't have a majority of the board on the search committee.
We currently have a vacancy, so we only have four members.
Well, four, you, a majority of four is two, is three, actually.
Yes, still the same quorum. Two or two. Yeah, still the same quorum.
Double check.
Yeah. Hopefully, by next week, we'll have them.
Then another decision that you'll need to make is timetable. And I think we've provided a couple of variations on the timetable. In this document, which I've given you, the very last page, that's a draft timetable.
Do you have one more?
I'll give you, I'll give you this.
Oh, yeah.
I'll give you, I'll give you mine.
Okay.
At the moment, I may need to borrow it back. I know that, oh, thank you, a couple of things I want to point out in, uh, there's a variation on that timetable that Dorothy Presser prepared. She's, was it connected to you?
Yeah, yeah.
And she didn't know that I was going to develop the timetable, so you have a couple of versions of the draft timetable here, and Dorothy's timetable is pretty close to the one that's here, but I think I have plenty of extra copies of the draft timetable, so we'll just circulate that. This timetable would have you getting your stuff together very quickly.
Yeah.
Getting the information to us so that our graphic designer can go to work on getting your material out quickly. Now, we can put up a notice of vacancy with a generic job description and dates for applications. We could have that up tomorrow morning. That's, that doesn't take very long, but the more details the candidates were wanted off the district tend to benefit from having something lengthier and more detailed.
Does it look poorly if you put a generic one up saying more information coming soon?
No, that's not a bad thing to do. Just to alert the universe of candidates that Lunenburg is open. You'll be looking for someone, and hopefully, someone who could be here in July, and watch closely, but you want your application deadline, you know, if you started accepting applications as early as next Monday, you could close on May 4th, which would have you up for a month, and that would work nicely. I will tell you that the superintendent candidate cohort is a procrastinating cohort in that I can guarantee you that 90% of your applications are going to come in in the last week of your process. No matter when you close, the last week, you can, I mean, you can do it. Medford, for example, we had four applicants on Friday before the Friday closing, and we had 25 applicants on the following Friday.
Wow.
Because they just do. I don't know why, but they just do.
So, we shouldn't stress out when we only have --
No, you shouldn't.
And we have one.
No, you should not stress out. You know, Lunenburg has a good reputation, and the quality of life is good. I'm going to step out on a limb here and say real estate is relatively affordable compared to other parts of eastern Massachusetts. I mean, you could, you could be, you could be a superintendent here and have another adult in the household also employed and buy a house and live here very happily for her own time, as opposed to having a mortgage for the rest of the next two generations trying to pay off overinflated real estate in eastern Massachusetts. So, and you are only, you're an hour away, well, depending upon the time of day.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, I live in Cambridge, and my GPS tells me I'll be home in 45 minutes.
Yeah, that's how much time. It really does. You could be there in four minutes.
But you could --
You could sign in Cambridge, as long as we're on this side.
And you go against traffic coming this way.
There's many places you could get to in a reasonable commute time.
That's exactly right.
Fresh Pond Parkway, absolutely.
You want to be Boston, Worcester, Tenway Park, theaters. You could even be in New York in four hours if you, you know, want to have a nice adventure. So, I, I don't think people will be discouraged from coming here for any reason if this is the kind of superintendency they'd like to be at. You have the best situation for a vacancy. Your successful superintendent is retiring honorably after, was it 13 years?
13 years, yeah.
As I said, the last time I was actually with the Lunenburg School Committee, the, I was brought out here to tell the school committee it was okay to promote Biloxi to the internal candidate to be the superintendent without a process, because that's what she did. And you know, the law, the law only requires if you hire a superintendent. It doesn't require that you go through all, any particular steps other than that you hire a superintendent in public. So, because you have the superintendency on the agenda today, you could literally hire me, what you have. And that's how much discretion the school committee has.
Wow.
I'm not suggesting that you need to, but, but --
Are you in here?
That would be an actual policy, not practice, I mean. But, but the fact is, the school committee makes the decision, and the school committee drives the process, and you have a great deal of flexibility. You can create whatever decision criteria you like, and you can cast the wide net for any special skills. Every district has certain special skills that they're looking for, and I know you'll be able to talk about them to your, I want the public to know what you're interested in. So, if the school committee is willing to focus, get a good search committee in place, and do your work expeditiously, you will be in a position to appoint a superintendent by the end of May. That requires that you be able to get your meetings scheduled to get it done. Let me explain something.
Yeah, we should do that in advance. We should do that in advance.
Well, you should. Before you appoint a search committee, you should tell the community.
We should date because --
You should say, "We're going to have a search committee, and it's going to have this many parents and this many faculty members, and this one, and this one, and this one, and this one," in terms of whatever. If you're interested in serving on the search committee, send a note of interest to the chair, and then the school committee can go ahead and appoint the search committee from the people who responded as being interested. But you need to tell them that they need to save some dates, because the worst thing that happens is you appoint a search committee, and then you have an orientation meeting, and then somebody says, "Well, I can't meet on Saturdays." And then somebody says, "Well, I work in Boston. I can't be here in," you know, they say, "It's going to take me 45 minutes to get home. It took me 2 hours and 15 minutes to get here, so, you know, I can't be here, you know, 8:00, 4:00, 6:30." And then someone's going to say, "Well, and, and I'm on the board of selectmen, and I can't meet on Mondays." And the next thing you know, it takes three weeks to get the interviews done, and you lose time. Fortunately, I think we're through the snow season, so you're not going to lose dates too well.
Right, Lunenburg.
And, you know, worst-case scenario, maybe you get delayed a little bit, and you either tell the superintendent that she's got to stay for an extra month, and, or, or whatever it might be, and --
Great.
If you do hire a superintendent from another district who's superintendent, sometimes they need to give their districts 30, 16, 90 days' notice. Sometimes the districts will be collaborative enough to say, "How about if we transition over the summer and that done? There's a lot of work that needs to be done during the summer." So, those are the key decisions that you need to make, and if you make those decisions and you get that information to us quickly, we can assist you in every phase of the process. And during your process, whenever there's something related to the search, somebody from MASC will be here to provide technical assistance. When the interviews take place, the initial interviews, when the question development is taking place, we provide you with onsite support, usually in a very low-key manner. And when the candidates are here interviewing, you're, you know, the search committee is the interview panel. We're in the back escorting the candidates in and out, because it's not about us, it's about you and the committee. We know that most school committees and search committees like to know that there's somebody they can ask about a process question. There are lots of questions that take place, and it's very, very hard to screw this up because there's a minimal amount of mistakes you can make if you just use good sense and the process.
So, no, you said the risk.
This is Phyllis, Phyllis Phillips.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Phillips.
From MASC.
During the initial interviews, that's an executive session?
They generally are.
Can the other school committee members be in the audience?
No, because it's an initial, incongruent interview. If the, if the other, if the other school committee members were present, you'd have a majority of the school committee in an executive session that they're not allowed to be in. Now, that's a very simple explanation. More detailed running battle that we have with the attorney general about what we believe is her incorrect interpretation of the open meeting law, but she's the attorney general, and my legal education comes from watching Law &amp; Order on Wednesday nights, and I'm in no position to win that argument.
Can you tape the executive session?
You wouldn't be able to watch it, so I can't, you really stayed a month or months later.
You could, but I've never met a lawyer who thought taping an executive session was ever a good idea.
Okay.
All right. Just wondering if this other interview is ever a good idea.
Occasionally, there are members of the search committee who, for whatever reason, are unable to be present at a given night, and sometimes the search committee will tape an interview or two so that you can watch it when you're next available. But those, any candidate who is interviewed in executive session who does not get moved forward to the school committee is entitled to perpetual confidentiality. That's the benefit that they get. The risk that they get is once they become finalists and their names are up there, anybody who's been looking for you and doesn't like you can, you know, I explained, if you're a principal, you've suspended the kid from school, and that kid's parents know your name, and they're probably not happy with you because their kids never do anything wrong. So, they Google you every day, and they wait to see when Phyllis is applying for a superintendency so they can call the school committee and say Satan brought this person to Lunenburg in Ohio. So, that's, that's basically what you need to do. You need to decide, do you want to have a search committee? How many people do you want to have on it? Do you, what do you want to say about your community? What do you want to say about the position? Job, the job description that you have for your superintendent, because it's been shared with me, I'm telling you, is broad enough so that it suffices as a, as an adequate job description. The job with the superintendent is so multifaceted that what you have in there is broad enough to allow them to do it. The other thing that I brought with me is we have a sampling of hundreds of questions that have been developed for candidates and some model interviews so that when the search committee is oriented and they're all charged with sort of developing questions to figure out how to question the candidates, it can be a little easier. And I have, I can leave copies of this, but you're also, the school district is free to copy this through, not confidential, not given, be held, or possibly printed in newspapers.
So, you would also assist them in the orientation for the initial --
We facilitate the orientation for the search committee, and we would be present at all the meetings of the search committee to facilitate them, not to drive them.
I have a question as far as the screening committee. Is that a structured interview? Are you going to ask the same question?
Okay.
And the second question for the school committee interviews, those public interviews, is that a structured interview, or is it, is it a free-flowing discussion slash interview?
There is a urban myth that all candidates need to be asked the same question in the same order, and that's not the case. What we found is helpful is for the school committee to develop, we recommend a 75-minute interview with the possibility that it could run overtime if you liked the candidate. You could get about 15 questions in on 15 topics. Sometimes, sometimes they run over because the candidate can't stop talking. Sometimes they run over because the search committee thinks the interview was about them, and the questions take longer to ask, and the answers aren't given. It can happen. So, we suggest that you actually have a structured interview.
Both, you're talking about both sets of interviews?
Well, for the, for the search committee, first of all, so that you, and I have some sample interviews here, but with the understanding that the questions can be followed up with follow-up questions that aren't scripted, because, first of all, the candidate may not answer sufficiently, or you may want to probe further, and we encourage the chair of the search committee to allow any members of the search committee to follow up on questions posed. Now, the other thing is sometimes school committees, the search committee will ask the questions this way, and sometimes she'll do it that way, and sometimes they'll do them backwards, sometimes they'll do them forwards. There's no requirement that they all be held in the same way, but you do want to be fair. Now, when it gets to the school committee side, it's, it's different. The school committee could develop a structured interview, or the school committee can do three rounds of round robin, and you can come up with your own questions and pose them to the candidates based on what you'd like to do. The search committee's a little more disciplined because the search committee is the servant of the school committee. You're there to prepare and make finalists for them. School committee members can pretty much ask whatever they want, but it's helpful if the interview has some consistency. The old, the joke we used to use is, you know, you might have a candidate who's a, was a history teacher, and someone will ask, "Well, tell us about the Mayflower Compact." And then the follow-up question is, "Name the signers?" That's not a fair question. I wonder how many people signed the Mayflower Compact. A good history teacher would know what it's about. You don't want any gotcha questions, but we do warn candidates that if you boast in your resume about having a special skill, you're opening yourselves to be questioned on your special skill. So, if you say that you are a theater enthusiast, someone might ask you how you would develop a theater program. But I was in a room once where someone claimed to have the speaking knowledge of a foreign language and was asked a question in that foreign language, couldn't answer it because his resume was exaggerated. So, as I say, if you boast about being a proficient musician, be prepared to explain, you know, what key you're in if you've got four flats or four sharps, and you need that flexibility. So, things that can -- So things that can happen. So what I would, I encourage you to do is, you know, confirm, search committee makeup, and then decide how and when you're going to appoint the search committee. Develop a timeline, and then determine what you want to see in your next superintendent that you would put into the brochure. In this particular handout, we have, I think we have a checklist here of some of the many question categories and selection criteria that people have identified, some of the things that they're looking for in school leaders, just so that you have an idea of what some districts have done. I think we should have numbered these pages, I'm sorry to have hit it. In regard to key responsibilities and, and selection criteria, those may be appropriate to you, they may not, and you may certainly have thought of things that are unique to your community. Some communities are looking for, this is interesting, in some communities it's very important that the superintendent know the kids. In other districts, that's not possible. If you're a lawyer, you have fifteen thousand kids, you're not going to know all the kids. Or how close to the community do you want the superintendent to be? How visible do you want the superintendent to be?
That was absolutely, I'm going through checking off some of the stuff.
Yeah, because she was a presence and all the kids knew who she was.
Now.
And community.
There are also, in our, in our question guide, there are some questions you can't ask, but every school committee who's doing this does not want to be doing it again in three years. But you can't say to a candidate, just how old are you anyway? Or how far away from retirement are you? Those are illegal questions. But you can ask, if this superintendency is successful, and you're doing well, and we're all getting along, will you stay here in five years? And that's when parents use your best intuition about how you can tell whether people are lying to you or not.
Right.
I'm told middle school parents are very good at that. Police are very good at that, too. Yeah, that's when, that's when you extract the commitment for someone who might legitimately say to you, I want to come to Lunenburg and I'm coming to stay, and I plan on being here for a while, as I have been in my other places growing up.
May I ask a follow-up question? Sorry for the sunglasses too.
Yeah, the sunglasses.
And the sunglasses in my eye.
Oh, no.
The light just really bothered me, yeah.
Oh, I had that last year.
I had it earlier this year, too. But, so Lunenburg is obviously a small district, and I think one of, I'm a local president, so I obviously teach here, too, but one of my concerns is because we're small, we're an experience building district, and so we become a stepping stone, which is different than someone retiring or something like that. So I guess twofold, an eloquent way to ask that question, maybe it's the same way, but then, does MSAC have access to what the statistics are on that? Are we?
Most departures are due to retirement.
Okay.
The average length of a superintendent's tenure is about four and a half years, but that's largely because in Massachusetts, if you go into teaching right after college, you can retire at a full pension at fifty-seven or fifty-eight. Sometimes it's a little later for, for women if they've taken time off.
For kids.
Sometimes it's a little different if you've traveled out of state. In other words, if you took time off, you took family leave, you took two or three years off to, to raise a family, you get penalized on the pension side, as you had to work longer in order to get the full pension. But yet, but even then, you could retire at fifty-seven, fifty-eight, or sixty. And I'll just tell you, as someone whose light day job was spent as a gerontologist, older people as day age, which is what I did before I came to MASC, daytime TV is terrible, and a lot of our superintendents who take early retirement are calling me on the fifteenth of September saying, you're right, I gotta come back, what's out there? So a lot of people work past the retirement age. Another factor is that usually the other adult in the household is not retired, so, you know, they're by themselves. And the same thing with teachers, though. So you have a legitimate right to probe around what kind of a commitment would you make to this district, and a legitimate right to use your gut to tell you whether you're getting a straight answer. But you can't ask any questions that would relate to an aspect of a candidate's age or marital status or.
Family commitments.
Hmm?
Family commitments.
Yeah.
Those are personal, you can't ask that, yeah.
You can. Now, they can offer it if they wish.
Right.
And if they offer it, then you're, you're free to pursue it, but many times candidates will mention their kids, or they'll mention their family, they almost never talk about how old they are. Sometimes the resume is an indicator, sometimes it isn't, but you have to be very careful
For the size of our school district, is ten committee members too many?
The search committee?
Oh, the search committee, yes.
An odd number is helpful.
Yeah, okay.
The larger the committee, the more wieldy it can become.
And the harder it is to get meetings, get, you know.
That's correct.
Everyone to meetings.
That is correct. So, you know, nine, eleven, good numbers, thirteen works, twenty-seven doesn't work.
It's too big in our town. Twenty-seven, thirty.
Doesn't.
Why not?
Well, we had that once. Well, you know, this is, this is the, this is among the most important developments going on in the community.
Oh, I know. Looked at, so well-received.
Well, and the other side of it is, there are lots of people who want to help you with your search, whether you like it or not. Your faculty will certainly want to be very helpful during the process, your administrators will want to be very helpful during the process, whoever covers you, are you, who covers you in terms of newspapers? Is it the governor?
Some, that's not.
Okay, some, okay. Well, this is a big story. By the hiring of the superintendent at the end of the school year. So if the reporters find out who the candidates are, they can report that, they don't need your permission. If they find out who the candidates are, they can call them up and say, you know, Mr. Johnson, I heard that you're a candidate for the superintendency, but don't ask me how I found out, I found out. You're a candidate for the superintendency in Lunenburg, oh, tell me something, you have kids, how old are you? They can ask, free of the press, unrestricted in Massachusetts. So the confidentiality with search processes is very important.
So how would we select faculty? Would that, we go to the LEA and say?
Well, what we suggest is that members of the faculty who want to participate on the search committee should send their.
The same as all the other people?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you can do whatever process the school committee uses to identify who you'd like to.
Meeting dates, though, is that key to be able to put in?
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Let's say, let's say you're putting it out, you know, for faculty members, anybody, if, if a lot of the meetings are on X day and that particular person knows they couldn't do that day, then.
I think we have to set a schedule before we even say, we want to, this is the schedule, if you're available and you want to sit on it.
And according to this schedule, the search committee will be interviewing the candidates a week of May seventh through the sixteenth of May.
Okay.
So I would tell the search committee that the week of May seventh, they better be available, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and maybe even Saturday.
Oh, good lord.
Well, you just never know.
You're not going to get this.
Oh, I know.
I mean, I would love to see you have so many candidates that you have to make tough decisions and have me five nights to interview them all.
Okay.
I'd love to see you have to make, that you have so many good candidates that it would be very difficult decisions.
Right, so it would be dependent on candidates, and they would have to save that whole week, and possibly Saturday.
So then the week after. And the week after.
Well, the finals are announced that week.
And then the school committee should be ready to, to get the candidates interviewed before the end of the month. You may wish, as this schedule proposes, to invite the finalist candidates to Lunenburg to spend a day meeting with your faculty, stakeholders, the community. A lot of people who can't be on the search committee will appreciate a chance to go to an open discussion and raise questions.
Is there a community forum on that?
Okay.
That forum, that with, no, well.
We did that with our principal.
But with the principal, there was a night, and each person, like forty-five minutes, we did it with the special ed director, too. Because those are two biggest, most.
With finalists.
The finalists.
Right. They could do that, just for the finalists.
Exactly. I don't know if that was going there or not.
So the site visits, is that the sole screening committee or just the school committee?
They, usually the school committee does the site visits to the sending districts. But, as I say, when the candidates visit you.
Right, okay.
That's generally open, and it usually is highlighted with an evening interview and other opportunities for the community.
So that would be like your forum?
Yes.
That would be a deal.
So it's not typical for a staff, and I'm more familiar with principal interviews, admin interviews, site visits, but it's, as a faculty member, and I don't mean this offensively to the school committee at all, but as a faculty member, I feel like a faculty member may notice something that perhaps a school committee member who's not involved in education might see, notice, I mean, it's typical on school admin levels, that someone's on there on a site visit.
Generally, the school committee does the site visits because they're the higher ranking authority.
Okay.
If the school committee wishes to invite others to go on the site visits, you can do whatever you like. It's, it's, the school committee is in complete control of all, of all the decisions made during the process, except that the search committee will make recommendations, the school committee and candidates. So in terms of what kind of visits you do, who gets to go, that's up to the school committee.
A member that is a teacher, too?
No, 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 no.
Just not in our district. So she might be looking at the same thing.
Where do you teach?
In Pittsburgh.
So.
So should we work on all this right now? The search committee, the dates?
Yes.
Right, so that we can make an announcement, yeah, that's what we're supposed, let's get to it, please.
And timelines, things that are most timely that we need to accomplish first, I would think, let's.
Yeah, let's get it done.
I did a quick add-on when he was mentioning all the different things.
So did I.
What, two and nine?
Did it by those numbers?
Correct.
Did you get the same, two parents, though, only two?
Well, just because we were aiming to get one of those odd numbers.
And we're going to get a town admin, that's the only.
Town, town admin? Oh.
Frequently, there's not managers.
Yeah, she, she is already expressed interest in the town.
I would lobby to, I understand, as a teacher.
She was lobbying.
Lobby. But no, and I know I've gotten hot water with my own members over this, but a lot of them, I'd love to see an LEA rep, because honestly, when I'm operating, and I don't mean as me, but when I'm operating as union president, I'm not necessarily working with the same mindset, I would work as with a teacher. Like, I'm more focused on that labor management relationship, the global picture of how things are done in the district, where if I was a faculty representative audit, I would not be focused necessarily on that. I'd be focused on.
So you want one LEA rep and one faculty?
Or two. That would give us, that would give us, that would give us an odd number if there's a town happening on it.
I'm not saying this because I'm in Lunenburg or because I know anything about Lunenburg, but we strongly advise the school committee to appoint the members of the search committee and not delegate it. And what happens in every search I have ever been involved with is the teachers and the faculty attempt to take control of the process away from the school committee. So I represent the members of the school committee.
I understand.
And I'm suggesting to you that you do whatever you think is best, and you understand your relationship. I'll be the bad guy on this one, telling you, you make the appointments.
Well, if we open that, that whole thing up to who can attend all the meetings, who's available, and then we can look at, okay, here's who's interested.
And what, the whole point is they also have to say what they're applying under. Because we have faculty who are also parents.
But then three categories.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so you have to say, well, I'm applying under the parent category.
Now, there are people who would be eligible for more than one candidate.
Right.
So if you have a teacher who's a parent, and that teacher wants to apply for the parent slot, that's fine.
Okay.
So we just have to look at the pool that comes in and go, okay, now we need to get this nine to nine people, and I'll represent across.
You never want the faculty to outnumber.
Oh, no.
The community members.
No, that was my point, but I think it's very common from other associations who've done this, it's very common to have a sole union representative on there.
Then perhaps we could add one of those and add one third parent.
We, well, Karen, what?
My question is from PTO, do you want me to give you?
Yeah, see, I want a parent reps from the PTO. Specifically from the PTO, because the PTO.
Would that be a parent rep, and then do you want me to provide you with those who have expressed interest?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or have them fill out a form, like everyone else.
We don't have a form.
Or whatever the.
A letter.
Whatever, whatever.
That way it's clear.
But we want to get our base, the base of the parents, I would like to come from the PTO, because the PTO does all the volunteer work.
We're only talking two parent reps, though.
Yeah, right.
That's it.
One from PTO, right? That's what I think.
Well, what you should probably do is, you know, when they send their letter of interest in, they mention that they were a PTO, so that you'll know.
Right.
And you'll be able to decide.
They're actively.
That's what I was thinking, active.
Active members as opposed to the giant scope of membership.
But you should, you probably would know anyway, right?
Karen, yeah.
Yes.
But it's going to go out to the entire. I just want to make sure. You'll send it out to them, tell them, just send it to me. Yeah, we'll talk about it. Yeah, I just wanted to add that question. Thank you.
So do we want to talk about what they need to include or when they need to include this to you?
Yeah, we got to get it done quick.
Yeah, letter of interest, but.
I don't know, our next meeting is next week.
Yeah, what the role is merely is, I mean, a teacher, and a parent, and a PTO member, you know, like, and, and they could also say which role they would like to fulfill. But, you know, you probably don't want four, probably don't want four teachers, even if one, one teacher says, I'm going to be the parent and one that's.
Right, right.
You know.
You want to diversify the committee, you don't want to.
Exactly.
So letter of interest in your role in the community and why you'd like to be on it.
And why, yeah.
And then make sure that you can be available for the date.
And the dates. They have to be available for the dates.
Do they have to?
All of them.
Do they have to just identify themselves as one role, or let us know that they are in multiple categories, because you get more diversity, you know, who is doing what?
Right.
So don't just say role, role, or roles that you are.
Where you fall in all of these.
How are we putting this out to the community to solicit the input?
We have our meeting next Wednesday.
Right. Well, I, right, but if we're, are we going to do?
We should do it before.
Right, we're going to do something, maybe.
No Facebook posting.
Well, maybe through the superintendent's update, right?
So, yes, on Friday.
Okay. So, I think within that, we say, these are, these are the types of people that we're looking for from the community. Send your letter of, of interest to the chair, indicating which of these categories you fall under.
You fall under any and all.
Any and all of the categories you fall under. So that we at least give them a list, these are the types of people we're looking for, which are you?
Right, where you fall. And if you're more than one, you tell us all of that.
And tell us everything that you're involved in, and then why we should choose you for this important position.
Yes, very important. And all the dates.
Post it online at town website, post it in town hall, once the letter print.
Starting on the 30th, Tuesday.
Then also. Then also, then also ask all the principals to put it in their weekly updates.
Yeah.
All four principals in their weekly updates as well.
Right. They don't, yeah, it doesn't need to hide in that.
Actually, no, good point, they should.
We don't want it to hide in that.
Each one to send it out, huh?
We don't want it to hide in that update, it has to be all.
So all of them sent out a specific email letting.
And a town-wide, Heather, the view can send out a town-wide one to all the towns.
Town-wide email.
Can we comment on that?
Yeah.
All of the ways that you're talking about distributing this is a focus towards people that are on the school list and the town Lunenburg Online mailing list. It doesn't reach the general public. I agree that Wedger is out for this, at least for this step, because their deadline is noon Tuesday for their Friday edition. The SADL, although you can submit something probably two hours ago and it will be in tomorrow's paper.
Oh, okay.
The article that was in the paper this morning, the front page, was written last night at 6:00 p.m.
Well, I'm going to speak with Amanda tomorrow, so I can include all of this and she can put it in her article.
I think that's great, I mean.
Also the senior center, we could post to the senior center as well, just whatever.
You know, we can draw a huge number of people from that demographic, but I think they should be aware of what's going on.
Oh, yeah.
Can you post something to the library too?
Yeah.
So senior center, library, town hall. We got town hall listed. I don't think there's any more public buildings we're missing.
Ritter?
Ritter, I was gonna say.
I mean, we can.
There's really no bulletin board there, it would be on the window of the front door.
Yeah, it just counts in the.
There's not a huge amount of traffic that goes in there though.
If it doesn't hurt to print it.
Right, it's on your front yard.
I have, I got, it's a perfect spot.
People just drive by and see it, right?
Perfect spot, although, although it will point you.
Right, all of them, and the people will stop and be like.
So then the next part was the dates?
The dates, we need dates, meeting dates. Wait, we need two reps.
Two reps in the school committee?
Yeah.
So do we want a letter of interest from each of those?
No, I really don't.
Or you just want volunteers?
Yeah, well, I guess we should look at the calendars, so I, he suggests, Glenn says I should sit on it as a chair, because, yes, which makes sense, so then it would just be one of you.
So, my question is, because this would affect, might affect more than one of us being able to do this, the week of the 21st site visits, are they all mandatory, because that would require daytime for months? Those are all, those are all of us.
That's school committee, that's all.
So if they're all daytime, how would it work if we all can't be available today? I know I couldn't be available.
Jim, are you more flexible?
More than one day.
Depends on the day. You, you have, the only flexibility that you don't have on this whole thing is the closing date for applications.
Okay.
So, this is an advisory time table, you can change it all you want, but the one date that you can't change, what you said, is the date that applications have to be in.
Okay.
Do you like the site visits, the school committee goes on, do they all have to go?
Well, that's what she's talking about.
That's what I'm saying, just for me, like, I could do more than one day, I've got Mondays free and that's what I got, like.
Because they all work.
Yeah, well, the school committees, sometimes, sometimes two members will go, sometimes four members will go and split up.
That's what I, that's what I.
Two and two.
Okay, so that would be okay, because we're just talking about the screening, the screening committee right now. Those dates are different than the school committee dates. We're talking screening committee dates.
Sometimes a site visit is a half a day.
Right.
So you could, if you could only be there in the morning or the afternoon, you could make that work.
And then you would not, I could probably do an early one, all right, I am a little more flexible.
That's not what we're talking about right now.
I haven't got.
It's young things.
So I can.
So relative.
The rest are evenings, you guys, the rest.
We're talking about screening committee, yes, screening committee evenings, we have to look at.
Relative to that, week of September, I can do it every night.
Every night, gotcha.
Me too.
And you can too.
And you can too.
Happy birthday to me.
When is that? Oh, okay. Okay, so, we have to get this going if we get it out tomorrow, and then it goes runs, it's May 4th would be the deadline, right? And we have to have our search committee in place. And already with questions worked on, right? They would have to have all of that before the application deadline, correct? Or no?
Yeah, April 30th.
Okay.
Well, the week of April 30th is the orientation. Stop working on questions during the recruiting process.
Okay.
Search committee would be oriented and then would have a meeting to get started before the deadline.
Okay, that's it, the week of the April 30th. Okay. So, what are the dates we, you think that we should tell people to be available?
Glenn, how many nights?
How many nights?
I think it's questioning development and orientation.
We need, if group is efficient, you can do your orientation and your initial question assignments at one meeting. Then what you do is, or what you could do is, is we often try to do, you've got, I'm making this up, eleven people in the room, you come up with about twenty different categories for questions, individual members take responsibility for writing the questions, you get the questions into the aggregator prior to the end of the process, so that when you get your candidates, you can select your candidates and finalize your questions at the same meeting. You could do it in, excuse me, as two meetings, sometimes there's an extra meeting added depending upon how much time the committee has.
To maybe plan three meetings.
I was just gonna say, set up three meeting days, let's be.
You would have maybe an orientation meeting, a.
Question.
Question, planning meeting.
Planning, okay.
And then a candidate selection meeting.
Do you give, does any of speaking of a little more guidance than normal without meetings?
Oh, yeah, as much guidance as you want or need.
Okay, that's what we, we need a whole.
So, then what I would suggest now is we look at April 30th as the orientation meeting.
Yeah, the Monday, yeah.
The first is questions, and then the third is the follow-up prep.
Wait, wait, wait.
Since the second is a school committee meeting.
The whole week, the same week?
Well, the applicant is the deadline.
The candidates select that to be the following.
We gotta start interviewing next week, yeah.
Well, the candidates, they've got, they have till the 4th to get their application in, and we know they're not gonna turn them in until the 4th, so you don't meet until after the 4th.
Why don't we start the week before?
Oh, I know, the 20th.
You need two before the 4th and one after the 4th.
So, wanna do April 30th, May 3rd, and then? Week of May 7th, what if we did May 7th as the other?
Yeah, that's good, yeah, application is May 3rd, if you met again on May 3rd.
April 3rd, yeah.
Then you'd have four or five days to develop your questions, and then, if the application deadline is the 4th, the following week, you could select your candidates and actually finish questions that you might have, so.
So, orientation is Thursday, what did you?
May 3rd, Thursday night.
We're in, question planning, and then candidate selection the next week?
Well, we need to have that other sort of extra meeting built in?
Well, candidate selection would be.
That is the extra meeting.
We have, that is the extra, question, planning is the extra.
Candidate selection slash polish up those questions that we developed.
So are we looking at?
May 7th.
But I will say, May 7th is a PTO meeting night, so if you're looking at pulling from the PTO.
I don't really care at this point, because I have too many other things going on.
Okay.
So, Mondays are good for me.
Okay.
Then the PTO work is skipped.
Yeah, you know.
Is May, what's going on at, what's going on at PTO?
May is our election, so.
Oh, so that's.
But we can, people can be nominated, you know, without, while they're not there, it's like.
Are you sure we can, I have too many other things.
Would you rather go?
And so then we'd look at the Saturday night, then possibly 12 for interviews.
Well, you couldn't interview on the 7th.
No, it's, no, we're selecting the candidates, they turn in their paperwork by the 4th.
So you'd look through them?
Yeah.
Glenn, how much time?
Right, like, I know that's getting, that.
Yeah, but it's not like, how much time does a candidate need, or do you need to schedule these meetings, these interviews, so will they select on Monday?
If your deadline for applications was the 4th, and then you reviewed them all for the weekend, selected your candidates on Monday, you could start interviewing the candidates as early as, you know, that Thursday or Saturday, or they wouldn't be on Saturday. Those calls are always returned for some reason. And the candidates always tend to be available.
That's smart.
And town, so. They don't take up that work and explain that.
Town meeting is before that, which is good, because that's Saturday.
Town meeting is the fifth.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we wouldn't be interviewing a, Saturday after that, we wouldn't have a potential conflict with the town meeting.
For the 12th break.
The 12th would be the Saturday, as far as the Saturday.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if, like, when looking at Saturdays, you wouldn't look at one before the 12th, right?
So then you'd be looking at a meeting on the 7th to select your semifinal list and start scheduling interviews for the 10th and 12th, is what it looks like?
Yes.
10th and 12th are interviews?
Is it affirmed, you wanna have a finalist announced by the 16th, is that confirmed?
And then begin the process of, once you get your finalists announced, the school committee can go at whatever pace it feels it can do most expeditiously.
I'd rather.
We're gonna have interviews on.
Have dates on the earlier side personally, because if stuff gets bumped out, you know what I mean, for any reason out of our control, then.
And the finalist is announced by mid, we don't even have a meeting that day.
We're meeting on the 23rd, correct?
Yeah, for reorg.
For reorg, right.
So, how many, how many days does the search committee spend interviewing the first ten, can it say 20?
Depends on how many you have. Generally, you could interview, if you do a 75-minute interview, which is a pretty diligent interview, you could do two a night. If you did, you could do three a night, but I wouldn't want to be the person coming in from out there, you tend to be interviewed.
No, I wouldn't want to be there.
So if you, if you say, three nights and a Saturday, you could interview ten people comfortably, Saturday you could do more, because you could start, you could start Saturday morning and do three people lunch, and then.
Take a break.
Eat, eat, stand, have a meal.
Then the 15th. Why don't we have the 9th, why are we doing nothing the 9th?
I mean, it's potential, could someone do the interview in two days? I think that's.
Yeah.
If you don't identify till Monday night, you're giving these people 24 hours notice. I mean, if they could, awesome.
Right.
Throw it out there.
Funny. They could do, can we put that in our timeline?
Let's put it in, and we're, you know what I mean, if we don't use the date, we don't use it.
Well, can we put it in our?
Yeah, but these are potential dates.
These are the potential interview dates, can we have them in here or no?
You could if you wanted to.
Right, because we are working on, like, a very tight, like, election.
Well, 24 hours notice is pretty short.
Well, it's very short, yeah.
I mean, I thought that Friday.
Usually 72 hours is.
I think that's why you were pushing for Thursday.
You could conceivably start Wednesday, Thursday, and do Saturday, and then go into the next week if you needed.
So 9th, 10th, 12th.
Because there's a reason why Friday is being left off.
Because it's a brush.
People need to meet on Fridays.
You want a challenge, you want.
They'd rather meet on a Friday.
You could if you wanted to.
I'm also, yeah.
Well, and that's for whoever's on the search committee.
The only thing that I couldn't, I couldn't do morning on May 12th, I wouldn't be available till 12:30.
But right now, I'm talking about the search committee anyway, so this isn't you.
It might be.
We are, we're looking for candidates, um, so.
It's hers, so we need one of the three of us to fill the other, right?
So, did we say the 14th too, for interview?
I did 10th, 12th, and 14th, but we were debating on the other day.
I think 9th, 10th, 12th, 14th.
9th.
9th being a.
It's May 1, 10th, 12th, and 14th.
Well, the 9th was the point where I wasn't there.
Yeah. So, fast on the 9th, or staying on Friday, the 11th?
Well. What's the lesser of two evils of those two choices?
I don't know.
I think the Friday gives the candidate the appropriate time.
To work it out with their.
I think trying to do 24-hour notice is really unfair.
That's hard for just a. I think it would be terrible, like, in charge of the school district.
The 11th? What about the 15th?
Yeah, we could do that too.
Wait, are they, are we supposed to have a meeting to decide finalists after the interview?
Oftentimes, when you do the final interview, and you go right to the discussion, you can get it done in the same night.
Okay.
Depends on how the process.
So do the 15th, so do the 15th as the final?
Yeah, that's.
10th, 12th, 14th, and 15th.
And then the 16th you didn't announce.
Do you need the 14th and 15th if you have that Saturday?
It depends on how many people apply.
So we have three evenings and a Saturday.
That's what, you're just blocking.
Yeah.
Not that it will take place.
Or, so when the search committee comes up with their finals, do they need to present it to the school committee?
Do they formally present it?
And that's an open meeting?
That would be an open meeting.
Okay, that would be till the 23rd.
Yeah, that won't be till the 23rd.
That would be until the 23rd.
So we're already pushed back a week.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't have to. Can we have a special meeting?
Sure.
So why don't we present, why don't we present on the 16th? I don't want to do that either.
Call the meeting on the 16th.
Call the meeting, are you kidding?
I know I don't wanna, I'm just saying.
Where, if we wanna.
I think they.
The day that the search needs for announcing your finalists, that's a flexible date, you can.
So, like, then if we have until the 23rd, we can, we don't have to have three nights of meetings in a row.
Right, so then we're talking about a limited week, a limited time for doing our, our site visits, that's the only thing to keep in mind, is we're more limited on site visits, because then you're going into Monday's a holiday, coming out of that.
Okay, but this is if we're voting to a point on Thursday to May 31st, which we wouldn't.
Our target was that first
June 6th.
June 6th, but in my mind, I also thought, will we make it by June 6th? Do we really, do we need till the 20th?
So the vote to a point will happen on June 6th. Finalist, finalist announced on 23rd, which relaxes the date a little bit. Site visits, the week of the 20th. You have to do it after the 23rd, so from the 24th, you're and into the following week, because you can't just say the week of the 28th, because No.
We've lost a day there. But you have to be done
So May 24th by
The next Friday.
Right.
So our week just starts on
Which is June 1st, right? Because, yes, Friday's the June 5th. So May 24th to June 1st are site visits.
Oh, can we go over the interview dates then again? Because that was too many, one, two, mm.
So now we can relax those dates?
Yeah, they don't have like 14th, 15th, 16th, that's crazy.
Yes.
That's just crazy.
10th, 12th?
Plus, you also need time to think about it.
Yeah, I have to sit on things. So I, I can't just sit on very well decisions.
How about 10th, 12th, 15th, and then maybe the 17th?
Can we do the 14th? Can we do a Monday?
Okay.
Monday work better than Wednesday, even the 16th.
And maybe
14th and 16th, can we do that?
15th or 16th, whatever that day is, that last day is, I guess
So May 10th, 12th, 14th, 16th.
Yeah, is that okay?
10th, 12th, 14th, 16th?
Yep.
10th, 12th, 14th, 16th. That puts a little more That puts a little more
Serious Saturday.
And then you still
Yeah, the 12th is a Saturday.
So that's a total of seven dates we're looking at for structured meetings, right? April 30th, May 3rd, May 7th, May 10th, May 12th, May 14th, May 15th.
And they have to be available for them.
Yes.
Especially the interviews. Interviews, they have to be available for all of the interviews.
But you really should say they should be available for everything. They miss the orientation.
If a candidate misses an interview session, they should simply not participate in discussion about the candidates that they weren't present to see. That wouldn't disqualify them from participating. They, you never know what's going to come up and someone's going to have
Life, yeah.
Yeah, but I think Out of the gate, you should have, have a commitment to all those dates.
Right, and then something comes up that's totally
Is it a missed two of the dates?
No.
Probably not.
No, right.
Yeah, you have to sign up and say it's real, all of those.
Right, please, yeah, and not just every effort.
Right, yeah.
And quite frankly, at the beginning of the process, if someone shows up at the orientation and says, "I can't make two of these dates,"
Then just pick somebody else?
Kick them off and give them an alternate. Because it's not appropriate and it's someone dishonest.
Right.
But it happens all the time.
Oh, I believe it. Because they think it's okay and they'll just come in and do it.
So that brings up an interesting question for the orientation. Do we invite more than the nine? Have a couple of alternates there just in case.
The orientation is a public meeting, because there's nothing confidential being discussed with the orientation. So you, you could have a sort of informal emergency
A couple of bad ones.
Or if they come here, like, if they came and were to come.
You have the alternate, you have them in your pocket.
Right.
And then if you need them
You call on them.
You call them.
If the orientation is an open meeting, you can tape it too, right?
Yeah, absolutely, like, we already can see this there.
Yeah. Someone has to back out.
And they could even watch the tape of the orientation.
Exactly.
If you had to pass on it.
Okay, so we're going to put these dates out. And ask people to submit letters of interest to me. Do you need to see them too? Just me.
What, who do you recommend? Whoever you want. I mean, if they came to the school district office for you, that's fine. The, it's no, I mean, it's not a matter of confidentiality. Who wants to be, who submits a letter. I would, however, as a courtesy, protect the identity of the candidates who submitted letters to the extent that you could. But you could inform them that the people who express an interest, their names could become public.
Okay.
I'd assume most people are going to email these to you.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring.
However, it goes to a central location and then email to you.
All right, so we have the dates, we got that part done. What else is on there?
What are we looking for for the promotional brochure?
On the, so back just real quick on the dates. So we're sending these out to expect to have the date to have the candidates send their notice of interest.
Oh, what's our deadline?
What's our deadline for that?
Okay, it says the orientation will be April 30th. And we should appoint before that, right?
We should appoint before that.
Is that publicly appointed?
Yeah.
Remember that's all the language in there?
Yeah, right.
We have a 25th as a school committee meeting, right?
Yep.
It is.
So they have to have a meeting by the 24th?
Oh, no, no.
No, more time.
Yeah, I need more time to go.
The 20th?
Yeah. That's vacation week.
So that's during vacation weeks, so if you want early. So this notice, this week, if this notice
They should have the, so she, Friday the 13th.
Two weeks is plenty of time.
That's what I'm saying.
Friday the 13th.
Give it like the time, people, yeah.
Friday the 13th.
Friday the 13th, yeah, and April 13th.
And then, just a question, if people were to mail in letters, um, whatever. But is it better to go to Mike than you, so that anything coming in? No, I think, I don't care who makes the decision, I'm just throwing out ideas and trying to look ahead. Is there, is it better for it to be going, like, if letters get sent to the school? You don't want letters at home.
No, no, it's, it was sort of the
It's your attention at the school.
No, that's what I'm saying.
My attention's at the school office, yeah.
Is that just like a central location?
Superintendent's office, 25th.
Right, so then just to know if it then made sense for everything to go like Mike and then he would gather
No, you just go to the superintendent's office.
And I guess the
Yeah, attention to the meeting.
Does the chair make the decision on who sits on that?
No, we do.
We all?
We all do.
We would have to debate.
Yes.
Debate.
Yeah, because there are going to be that many people.
Well, hopefully, we have more than I need.
Can they look at them, other than in the public meeting?
Can I forward them to the school committee? I can, but we cannot discuss it.
You can forward the names and packages of the interested parties, just don't deliberate on them.
There's no deliberating, no comment.
Just for review, so that we're better prepared.
So you know, yeah.
You can review them ahead of time, just don't discuss them yourself.
We'll discuss them on the 25th when we Great, and then we'll appoint the committee.
Right.
On the 25th.
On the 25th.
Okay, so you want to make sure that
That's why they need the first meeting.
So they'll know, they'll know, they should have planned time, they should be saving these dates if they're applying. And that's plenty of time for them to know.
And you'll do the write-off that the people will be appointed on the 25th.
Yeah.
So that, so people won't be all like, the 20th, oh, why am they here?
Right.
All in the write-off.
It's great, yeah.
And so Christine, I guess, can you
So they just have a favorite date, so the 25th.
And then once you, you'll find out on, after the 25th, right after, if you've been selected, and then we'll see on the 30th. All right, all right.
Can you do that first, or?
Okay, that's
You still need to appoint your second.
I know, we need a school committee member and second on the screening committee. That we need.
I'm free for all those dates. Wendy, I don't know if you are.
I am free on the 12th, but not until 12:30 PM, so that is a handicap. I mean, it's not undoable, but, I mean
What time are these evening meetings? Particularly the first three.
If you did it at 6:00 and 7:30, two interviews, you'd be done at 9:00.
So are we going to say that each of these
Wait, interviews, you mean just interviews?
Except for the, except for the Saturday, each of these meetings start at 6:00?
Well, 6:00 is the earliest, yeah. For all the meetings. The orientation, all of those, 6:00 is the earliest.
I'll be honest, if we're having community members, 6:00 is a little bit early for anybody that's coming from anywhere.
That's the interviews. He's, those are just the interviews.
No, I get it, but think about our potential candidates too. 6:00 is early, anybody on our search committee, 6:00 is a bit early. I'm just saying, even 6:15 or 6:30, just in consideration.
I do see a point, but also remember the tail end a bit too. Like, that's something to keep in mind.
We don't want to go home at 10:00.
9:45, you wouldn't get, like, if you put a 15-minute buffer in, not that, I get it.
You can make that decision when you
Yeah, we don't, do we really need to decide that right now?
I just want to know roughly what
Well, the people who want to apply to be on it will want to know roughly when it is. It was They just say you can't get home, you know, can't get somewhere until
I can't get
Only if you, only if you meet it, so. But I mean, you know, if you choose them and then they go, "I can't make 6:00."
Well, you can just say 6:00 is the earliest.
Yeah.
Okay, 6:30, if you can't make a 6 o'clock meeting, don't apply.
Right.
Okay? Because we're not going to make it 8:00.
Right.
Because you have a two-hour commute.
So you should probably say, we'll probably be from 6:00 to 9:30, or something like that.
Meetings will not begin before 6:00. And What are we going to say? We don't know when they're going to end.
And Saturday, you, is that like
And Saturday, we don't even know when they're going to start.
You can be flexible.
Plan on most of the days.
Just hold Saturday, because we don't know what time they'll start. We don't even know if we're going to need a Saturday. It's just to hold it.
Right.
Right?
You probably can't get 10:00.
Right, you probably do need a Saturday, but you don't know.
I know.
But maybe, like, you know, we're looking at, that's, yeah, if a lot of people
Right. Hey, we're thinking, we're grandios, we're hoping for 20:30. Right, but you never know. The screening committee said we have three. You never know.
As you get overwhelmed by this whole process, just remember what you said back in earlier meeting or two ago, that if this process does not go smoothly, you will not force through to get a superintendent.
And we, yeah, no, we have that in the back of our head the whole time. We have to do an intern.
The, I guess, the, the, the other stuff that you need to resolve would be the key expectations for the person, and then the decision criteria, and the experience that you're going to require in a position that you're hiring. You're 90 minutes into the meeting, so far you've figured out the search committee.
I know.
So you've got, the danger of any search is that it becomes so much process that you get into a process gridlock.
That, that's why it's like, we have to decide on a time, right now we don't. Because honestly, anybody signing up for a committee of this magnitude should know that they're going to dedicate a lot of time to it. So honestly, if you don't have that time to dedicate, please do not submit an application of interest.
In terms of the other stuff that you need to get figured out, you, you can sit, you know, here tonight and group edit that and get that done. If you do, I would suggest expedite that.
Yeah, we need to get the other stuff. We should have a really good list from We do have a
We did have a couple of things on here that I liked the verbiage.
Where, where?
On the back, here's the selection criteria examples. Just, just the simple bullet point of it is nice. Knowledge of innovative concepts, I think that's come up for us many times. I'm on the
Okay.
You ready? I'm just throwing these out, please, like
The ones that kind of matched up with what
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Teaching, we wanted classroom instruction, typical classroom, right? That's what we spoke about, typical.
Yes.
So
Non-traditional considered, I think was something we heard a lot about.
Not in, not in style, but what you tie.
Right, yeah.
Typical, a typical classroom setting.
A typical classroom
And wanting to work outside of the box.
Yes.
But no, that's not what we're talking about right now. This is a typical classroom setting, quality of experience, teaching in a typical, like, say Mary. She sees 100 students a year because of her classroom setting. We don't want someone who only sees 20.
Right.
Um, the financial fiscal management experience? Particularly now, looking at what the next year or two might bring us in budget?
We don't need this urban experience, right? We can take that.
Collaborative skills, because we've talked about working together.
Does that IBB thing too, like, IBBs?
Also just cross-building, how do we all work together?
I don't know if the verbiage is right, but the one on currency, on technology and education, that kept coming up.
That came up a lot.
It's crazy.
What was that?
Is that up to date or current on it? It does.
Terrible way to run. Sorry, you know how I am. I like this clear sense of direction, purpose, and a moral compass.
Particularly since we just created our new mission statement, core values and
Yeah.
Yeah, vision seems an interesting word in there, but I don't know if that's to, like, speak, but that came up a lot in your
And passion.
Yeah, but the vision came up a lot in your mission statement, so strategic plan, that's the right word.
So there is one on there that says strategic planning, but we don't need someone to strategic plan right now.
We can take that off.
But you could say something about familiar with and implementing?
Familiar with and
Because you guys just did the strategic
Yeah, it's just
So wouldn't you, you might want someone who's willing to implement?
So familiar with implementation of a
Of district, strategic plan or something like that.
But in three, four years, we'll be looking at a new strategic plan.
Five, I thought.
Five, right? No, it's five, so that's
Yeah, it's a five-year plan, but in three or four years, we're going to start wanting to think about what's going to be the next five years, right?
Oh, my goodness.
I mean, we're, we're going to constantly be looking at planning and improving the plan. It's not written in stone now, unchangeable. It's going to be a living document, so it's got to be somebody who can
Work with it.
Work with it and make changes.
And then move it forward.
And move it forward. Move things forward that are working and not move things forward that aren't.
Experience in collective bargaining personnel, they will negotiate, we will have another contract negotiation within this contract, correct?
Most likely, if you hire a superintendent with a three-year contract, that means you win. Like, one year you win it, but three years for you, you win. And I don't know, your other bargaining units could be up. I think some of them got finished this year, right?
Some without, you know, and some of them are more basic to negotiate.
Grant writer.
Grant writer, oh my gosh, yes.
Right, it's going to get lost in all this. We got to cross out, some of this stuff, it just, it doesn't look
Does grant writer go in the financial fiscal management?
Yes, it does.
Experience leading in schools out of sanctioned status, we don't need that. Communications skills, is that really something we actually have to write that down?
Yeah, right.
That is obvious.
If that's not where we're at, then
Okay, experience with municipal government operations. That's where we come into community leader and partnership with the town, right? That's what we thought of. Right? So that is what we would put there instead of experience with municipal A community leader who will work in partnership with the town.
Glenn, question, are we, do we have too much here? Because I think some of the guy
Wendy crossing it off.
I have to tell you. I would not micro-edit this particular part of the stuff. We can make it all fit, and it's not too much. There's a lot of room on these things, and if you do an electronic version, there's an unlimited amount of room. Just don't give yourself too many things.
Yeah, there are bullet points.
Well, but that's a collection of bullet points from different districts over the years.
We don't need
To help you pick six or eight of them and just
Right. If you look, they don't have that many, three, four bullet points, key responsibilities. Is that what we want, key responsibilities? Because that is totally different than what this is. Provides caring and responsive educational leadership in a district with a diverse social and economic population. Ensures strong fiscal accountability with implementation and oversight of the budget and strategic planning process.
That's right.
Right. Establishes the positive supportive learning environment that includes high academic performance at each grade level for all students and staff. Establishes and maintains a cooperative and productive work relationship with the school committee, staff, students, parents, town government, and the committee, the community. I think, are we looking for more of this than this?
Sum it all up unless you have something very specific to Lunenburg that others might not have.
Because we don't need to have all of these little bullet points, it's too much.
The only thing that would be specific to Lunenburg that I didn't hear, and I may miss it, was community involvement.
The visibility.
The visibility aspect, I mean The visibility aspect, meaning they meant a visible member and front member of the community.
Okay, then we have this one that says, "An extraordinary advocate for public education who knows how to successfully collaborate with local, state, and federal governments." I mean, let me say, strong financial, "An energetic and inclusive leader and team builder." That one's good. But it doesn't say visibility yet. Can't we just cut and paste from that one? I don't like this long list. "Demonstrates success in community engagement and involvement." That's what we want, right?
Yeah.
That's this one, Tewksbury. So can we cut, we can just take a bunch of them? That's what we're going to do, people?
As you can see...
Okay, get off of that big giant list.
That's why we strongly discourage group editing at school committee meetings, because you end up with extended conversation and not getting anything.
From what I'm seeing, the qualifications are pretty standard.
Yeah, all the five, you have a master's degree, PhDs degree.
Couple of key things that you want to make sure that you do resolve. Something about the compensation package, even if it's only competitive salary compensation.
Something like that.
That was on King's.
Salary commensurate with experience, that's what we're going to use, is that this? Three-year contracts, typical, benefits to be negotiated, can we use that?
We often see...
What do you think?
We often see advanced degree required, doctorate preferred.
That's in one of these.
Hold on, it is, which one, Tewksbury?
Would it be appropriate to add one more word to that, strongly preferred?
Which one?
You can say whatever you like, and as I may have suggested earlier, I personally do not engage in group editing, ever, so you understand.
Okay, so what, you were saying like there?
I want to say one thing about this, exponentially. Right after Lobster, there is nothing more overrated in our world than EDD. Some of our best superintendents have master's degrees, and some of our most ineffective superintendents have doctors, some of them from electronic diploma mills in Florida.
Oh, got it, okay.
So I would leave it to the school committee to judge the academic and intellectual qualifications of the superintendent, certainly encouraging a doctorate, but you don't want to scare people around.
That comes back to my comments in the previous meeting, you know, you're looking for a master's degree, but isn't going to be within it as to what that master's degree...
If it's a doctorate, it's a work.
Do we have both of those, the ten years successful work experience administration? Do we have a...
Yeah, they have ten years, minimum ten years in education.
Certified by Massachusetts.
Oh, I like that. Three classes, should be more than three in a classroom.
On the licensure, you probably want to indicate licensed as a superintendent or licensed eligible.
This one says that King Philip has the best one. It says licensed or eligible for licensure as superintendent of schools and master's degrees.
Yeah, and that's because if somebody's coming from another state, they're eligible for license, they may not be licensed, so you don't want...
The qualifications on King Philip are nice.
That's, you know, that's, right?
Master's degree required.
So are their salary and contracts, or all their other things, let's just...
Less than three years classroom.
The Tewksbury one's...
No, I'm sure they have, yeah.
Templeton one too, or there's...
Yeah. Yeah, this one, okay.
Well, but you know, the reason is that they put that online, they did not distribute it.
Oh, okay.
That's huge.
So it was a handout that they provided for their community, and it was something that you could see on the website.
Oh, okay.
And it tapped on the website, it tells you, put out extensive additional information, including if you wanted, your job description.
Right, right, a longer one.
Yeah.
What's going to be on here?
Your three-year question, I would just, that would become part of an interview. I can't, classroom experience is really important. Three years is an interesting cutoff, because as a teacher when I'm interviewing and I see someone's had three years of experience, my first question is, were they not hired back?
Did they not get professional status?
Right, did they not get professional status? Do they choose to...
Or did they bump them?
You know, so I think that just becomes a...
Right.
I mean, I think classroom experience is helpful, but, you know, I think that just when you look at experience, it just brokers a bigger conversation.
So do you think it needs to be in there, no less than three years classroom experience?
Well, this one just has the ten years in education, and this one has education administration. Are we specifying out of ten years in administration?
No, just ten years in education.
In education.
Oh, oh, oh. So are we just saying ten years in education and keep it open enough?
Be as flexible as you can.
Ten years in education.
Education, if you don't go into the...
This one says with a minimum of three years in central office or admin, a minimum of three years of teaching. And it's a curriculum development program, but they want it all in here.
Right, right, right.
So put the ten, so put the ten years in, maybe the ten years, and then the selection committee...
Yeah, you can figure it, you can pull it out.
Where their ten years were spent and...
Ten years in education.
Is it providing a good candidate?
Okay, what do you think, just ten years in education? Wendy? Ten years in education.
In education, that's what we were just saying, that, you know, I was saying to her, pigeonholing yourself. And that's something when we had our meeting together, that was other folks from other districts who've been through this recently, had those words of wisdom for us. And also, like, when the candidates are looking at your information, they're going, man, they're awfully rigid.
Yeah, yeah, this one looks really rigid.
And then some people might not apply because...
They don't fit all of them. So this one that Maragat had has more school budgets. See, this one has successful experience in budget development and financial management, but then they have, this one has demonstrated skills in personal management negotiation, IDB.
Oh, they have IDB. It was kind of awesome, but I don't think it's a reason...
I don't think it's a reason to hire.
No.
Right.
In fact, you could just introduce a new person.
I think that those are nice to have lists.
Yeah, that could be on a big list.
Can we come part of the interview or something like that?
Strong leadership communications and public relations skills. That could be the last bullet, right?
That's, I think that needs to be in there, that was...
But that would be, that would be on the criteria or qualifications. This is their qual, they have that on qualifications. Or do you want to put up that bullet that you're talking about?
Well, I think that's...
Is that criteria, that bullet that you're talking about?
Some qualifications are like a...
Right, it's what...
Res, like a degree.
Yeah, I agree, it's, the bullet makes sense, but it's in the wrong place.
It is, right?
So let's take the bullet and put it where it needs to be, and focus on qualifications being ten years, masters.
So that would be demonstrate success in community engagement and involvement, right? That's what we were talking about? So we need to put that. So I'm just using this King Philip one to mark up, because most of that so far has been the same.
Yeah, that was the only one I remember was a big... That could be a selection criteria.
Yeah, right? Because we would like to hear from their community that they've been visible and part of, actively part of their community.
And that's part of the thing that you have liked that, you know, a lot of you get to go...
Oh, yeah, everyone likes King Loxie and everything.
I spread through my notes from that meeting.
Oh, yeah, what else do you have?
We can put all of our information as well.
Budget. What are budgets?
Just updated.
And with how many people she supervises, right? She, how many teachers, support staff, all these, this, this. School committee people, we have them listed. Do we have to, oh, we're going to have a vacancy, hopefully filled though. What do we do with that?
What?
Mr. Glen, if we have a vacancy and we're supposed to, and with all of our school committees, just vacancy, okay.
Positions do we fill, when will the positions...
Hopefully next Wednesday, we're going to hopefully with VOF.
If you do an electronic version of that, we can correct that.
All right, so we'll do that, and then, then our timeline, so what's our timeline?
Application deadline, we had it Friday, May 4th on the suggestion.
Yeah, place name, May 4th. From all of our interviews, so we have, wait, the 10th through the 16th, right?
No, the, like, that's a bit...
We just did our block party, 10, 12, 14th, and 16th.
Other interviewings, yes.
Finalist names, what did we say?
We said we were at our meeting, yeah. Two months, potential site visit dates in there? Yeah, we said May 24th to June 1st on the site visits.
June 1st. Roped to a point, what would that be, June, what would that, June 6th? July 2nd or as soon as possible, just July, we don't need as soon as possible, do we?
First third.
Yeah. Now, did we want to have a public forum date in there, once we select our three, or whatever?
Could that be part of the site, because this is a site visit, if I heard you correctly, it could mean, it would include people going out there, would possibly include people coming here?
It could mean both.
Okay, so that would just be a part of the site in this date. Okay, so the dates that we have in there, which is following the 24th is first, okay?
Those dates can be very flexible. Only you're closing applications.
Yes, we have to include our mission statement. Application process, and that would go to you, right? And it's right here, that is all the same. But A, Martin, that is a different representative, correct? Will we have a different person taking our search?
Yeah, they'll fill that in.
Right, you'll fill that in, right? Okay. Must be received, files are faxed by May 4th, right? One more made on...
June 2nd.
26th.
6th.
And trust application contact, so... It's not contact school committee members or members of the administration, that's a good one. We've got to get some pictures of the school.
We've got some nice ones.
Yeah.
There's some on the website.
Okay, then we have to do our community profile.
But those are all right now.
Somewhere...
On the website.
There it is, right?
Yeah, people at Lunenburg don't... Guidance might even have...
Guidance, okay.
Because they have to do it for colleges, like they do it for colleges. So they have something.
Core values of King, they have centrality of student learning, respect for diversity, communication. Where are... We have our mission statement, what do you have?
Well, the mission statement is here, but there were the...
We have our core values, don't we?
Seven, I think it's seven.
Aren't you the lady who knows all that?
Yeah.
I should have pulled that, I have to move that in.
That's your imperative, something to make.
Like critical thinking and... There's a lot.
Yeah, can you send them to me?
I can.
And I'll try to narrow them down.
Okay, I'll find it, okay.
Find this. I'll try to find them too, I'm sure I have them somewhere.
One of the things I heard when...
Yes, it's got to be on the website now too, it's all on there.
Mission statement and everything on the back of your...
Yes, and now we can just refer.
So it's always there.
And it's really probably uploaded on the web.
I'm sure it is.
We just need to grab it.
All right, so...
Hey, you can put your mission statement on your, anywhere in that.
Right, yeah, okay.
If there's something in your mission statement that is unique or special, particularly.
Passion is a blue night thing that keeps popping up.
Yeah, passion is a big deal.
But do you know what I just discovered, and this might not matter with what you put on there, but our school department, because we use the Blue Knight up here at the high school, but I was working on my career time, and I just realized that most of the school stuff on its letterhead uses the town of Lunenburg seal. We don't have actually a school district, from what I've done in my searching, we don't have a school district seal that's on our school district's letterhead, yeah, it's the town of Lunenburg.
Well, it does not be cheaper.
Well, I mean, I think, honey, but I was like, wow, we don't. And I went around to their building, like, do we have a school seal that would like went back to paperwork, like a district? So schools might have something, but in the district, we use the town, and it probably is cheaper.
Probably.
But I don't, I mean, I don't know if you want to then do the town seal as opposed to the Blue Knight.
No, Blue Knight.
I mean, I'm partial to the Blue Knight, but it exists in my building.
No, we're schools.
That covers two of the schools.
What?
That covers two of the four schools, right?
They shouldn't all have different, this panda, really? What is the other one?
The turkey.
No, sir. They should all be under the same, I've never been to a school where they had different... Yeah, I, where the district is, usually it's just a district, wine, I, it to me bizarre that they have.
All right, so how are we on?
All right, hold on. All right, wait, flip over right then. All right, so we've done that, we're going to make the brochure, I'll go through, type it all up.
Yeah, what you're going to want to do is you're going to get all of that stuff as quickly as you can into Jennifer Handy in our office. And today is Wednesday, she's in all day tomorrow, graphic designer's in as well. And if there's artwork to go with it, you can have somebody send that, and what we'll do is we will work up a draft brochure and share it with the chair and...
With the committee.
Where we need to talk to, because as I said, we don't group edit, we rely on you to tell us what to do, we do it our own.
All right.
And then we can get going. I know that the other thing that you might want to think about, we normally do focus group meetings in the community prior to the closing, so you may want to talk with Dorothy and Tracy about scheduling convenient times to meet with the teachers, parents, and others in the community. And in addition, we have several models of online surveys for those people who don't come out to meetings. And we can share them with you, and the surveys, we can get up very quickly, and then we can give you the data from the surveys also very quickly. And the summaries of the focus groups and the surveys, we usually like to share with not only the search committee and the school committee, but also the candidates. But that would be up to you.
And the purpose of this focus group is to...
To sit down with different stakeholders and say, as we get ready for something to go to the school committee and the search committee, what do we really, what do you need to ask the candidates about? What are the key issues for you?
Just like what we had.
Okay, so we could certainly share the minutes from that meeting as a starting point.
If you had such a meeting, okay. Then if you had such a meeting, you may only want to do an online survey to allow those people who didn't come to the survey to respond.
We did have that meeting. Online survey, okay.
Because we did have a good representation.
Really good meeting.
I thought.
How many people showed up when you did the community meeting? The reason I say this is because we usually get 20 times as many people responding online every...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Simply because, you know, these days, everybody is busy all day long.
You can count them on my laptop, I wrote them all down.
So we can put that up, so we can work out the text with you.
Yeah, it's a fun question.
Six, seven, eight, nine, spoke, did I count it? And then there were others that didn't speak.
Yeah, I didn't even, I have eleven that spoke. And then there was a few that did not speak, you're right.
So turnout.
That's huge, that's a big unit for us.
Normally, by the way, unless there's a real scandal or a crisis or something really bad going on in the community, the community tend, and the school, the community tends to support whatever the school committee does, particularly if everything's done in public. If, you know, if the superintendent had been thrown out because of something terrible...
It doesn't make sense.
Very poor example.
The superintendent had just embezzled. Then you get people turning up, but purely, people have a high level of satisfaction with their own districts, and they also feel free to contact their elected officials whenever something's on their mind.
Oh, yeah. They all do, every day, all night long.
Finding that out, so that's why we don't see a huge turnout at meetings, but we do when it's conveniently located at their computer and they can, they can respond during the commercials.
Or on their phone while they're waiting.
So we don't need to sort of...
No, we're not going to, no, no, we don't need to.
You can be in touch with our office.
Yeah, I'll call them tomorrow, I'm going to call them.
Jennifer Handy is the person you want to talk to.
Try get a Blue Knight.
Grab that.
Do you have one?
I don't, but Karen Giuliani should.
Oh, Karen, okay.
Because she's done...
All right, I'll touch base with Karen.
Yeah, she's done a bunch of work with that.
Can I make one comment about the symbol, unless I missed something? The school districts that have a separate symbol for the school district are regional school districts, and the ones that are just for a single town, they use the town seal on all of these.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, that makes sense.
And I think that's appropriate, to tell you the truth. And I think that's appropriate, to tell you the truth.
Because it's regional.
Oh, we have to use the town's seal, is that, where am I gonna get that?
Yeah, no, the town has, someone. But they should have it as an online.
Oh, Steve, he'll answer.
They'll have it as a digital.
He'll have a high-quality J-bad for you.
Yeah, they'll have a digital.
I'm gonna blue knight on here anyway.
You can get the word to the mission statement or something like that.
Yeah, serious.
And I will leave these with you, just so that you can have them. These are a couple of sets of some of our recent complete interview questions in order, and this is our question deck.
Okay. All right, what else do we have on our list? I think we got community and staff involvement. We have our little brief job descriptions and pamphlet. Scope of the search, is that now, scope of the search is based, like New England behaves?
Because everybody in America who's looking for a superintendency goes to the websites of the superintendent's associations and school boards' associations. You have national exposure for your vacancy.
Okay.
I would warn you about school spring if you use it. It's not great for superintendent searches because everybody can apply by just pushing a button.
Right.
We can create for you an online application, and applications can be sent electronically to us from anywhere. We will distribute your vacancy to our recruiting list, which is about fourteen hundred superintendent's offices, state school boards' associations, schools that track this. And we put the notices on our website and the superintendent's association's website, and the business officers on the website, they'll also put it up. So the superintendents get a million hits a year on their association's website because they put everything up. We get about a hundred thousand hits a year on ours. And everybody who's looking for a superintendency in New England who wants to go to Massachusetts goes to our website. It's a free resource.
Okay.
We would give it to you whether or not you were using us to help you with your search.
Okay.
And it's where most of the candidates come from.
We have our timeline, and we have, do we have, we have guidelines, right? We did that? Where are our guidelines?
Guidelines?
Yeah, guidelines to search. I think that's all covered. Don't you?
Yeah.
I think it's all covered in there. That's just vague. Right?
Is there anything else we need to cover for tonight?
Pretty much know what you need. You know what we need from you. And soon you get.
Yeah, yeah. To get. My eyes started to twinkle.
Carefully.
I know, you stay away from that.
I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, okay.
You're not gonna do that?
I'm not gonna do that, no.
Yeah, any public comment? Any public comment?
What happened to your answer?
You're good?
Yeah, but what happened?
Eight third, okay, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Oh, no, we need a second. We need a second school committee to have our screen. No, we've got a cabinet that decided. Yeah. Next one, Wednesday, next Wednesday, or yes, you're right, or one week's legislative committee.
And either way.
Either way, it's fine, it's, you know what?
Oh, you're available too, okay, so.
It's fine.
Won't be effective.
Yeah, let me rest.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.